Okay, it's five o'clock. I'm gonna call the City of Elkhorn zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can I have a roll call?
Sure. Skelton?
Pardon?
Stockel?
Here.
Boardman?
Yes.
Duchman?
Yes.
Welch? That's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to motion and action to name a chairperson.
Make motion for Jim.
Second.
Board?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
That makes it unanimous.
Right, motion carries.
Do you want to sit up here, Jim?
Oh, I gotta move chairs?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's where the chair is. You're boarding now.
Move chairs. Oh, boy. I'm getting too old for this. I sit down to get comfortable. I want to stay there. Okay. First item of business is a motion to adjourn into a public hearing. And we'll read the public notice. Are you reading that, Jerry, or?
I don't have a copy of it.
I can read it if you want.
Go ahead.
Notice everybody given that a public hearing will be held for the Board of Appeals of the City of Elkhorn on July 6th at 5:00 PM. For as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard in the council chamber, City Hall, 311 Seymour Court, Elkhorn, Wisconsin, for the purpose of hearing all interested parties, their attorneys or agents with respect to their requests submitted by Julie Taylor and Jim Gerlock to allow for a garage addition located within the side yard setback of the parcel. Section 17.7-2/5 of the Elkhorn zoning ordinance states that accessory uses and detached accessory structures are permitted in the rear yard only. In no case shall they be closer than three feet to any lot line or five feet to any alley line. Property is located at 12 North Church Street and is more precisely identified by the following tax parcel ID number YOP 00138.
Thank you. Any other comments by the zoning administrator?
Yes, thank you for all being here. Tonight, we are looking at a garage addition for 12 North Church Street. The applicant Julie Taylor applied for a zoning permit and building permit that was denied by our department due to setbacks. Currently, the existing structure that is on that property, the attached detached garage is, excuse me, detached garage is right on the lot line, if not a little bit over. And they would like to have an addition added on to that garage. So that is why the zoning permit was denied. Currently, our code, our zoning ordinance states that any building needs to conform with current setbacks, which would be three feet away from their side lot line. They are requesting a variance to build right on their lot line. That's what we're looking at tonight. Any questions for me?
Well, we'll back up in a minute because we did not get a motion to adjourn into public hearing. We read the public notice, but we need a motion to...
Some motion?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now.
So in the public hearing, you could hear from anyone who's present, and there's clearly not anyone present, but if anyone wanted to be heard at the public hearing for or against the variance, they could be heard at this time.
Okay. And there's no one here other than the petitioner, right?
That's...
So now we should hear from Ms. Taylor or Mr. Gerlock, either one. If you have any presentation to make, go ahead.
You can stand on what you've already presented, or you can make a statement.
Okay, I just wanted to add a few things, okay? I'll stand here if that's okay. Can you all hear me?
Get by the mic.
Before she makes her presentation, the city administrator is correct in pointing out, we should close the public hearing before they make their presentation. So if there's no one else that wants to be heard, you would declare the public...
Now we'll close the, okay. Now we'll close the public hearing, okay?
And now we're in our presentation.
All right.
Sorry.
All right, now go ahead, Julie.
I trust, I know that all of them...
Julie, I just wanted you to be able to stay on mic if you can, because in order for us to have the public meeting and have it muted online, it would need, we'd just need to speak in front of the mic. So it's not to amplify your voice, it's just to make sure that it gets recorded. So I appreciate it, thank you.
I'm assuming you want them to pass that around, right?
Yeah.
Thanks, Julie.
Yeah. My name is Julie Taylor. My husband, Jim Gerlock, is sitting behind me. We own the property that's on the west side of the park, 12 North Church. It's a red brick Victorian on the National Register of Historic Places by the Department of the Interior, as well as being on the State Register of Historic Places. I know that all of you got your packet, and in it, I did a write-up of exactly what we wanted to do is to, the structure, the unattached garage was originally a large carriage house, the two-story style that you see in some areas of the community. They typically were built on lot lines because of the horses and the buggy and just to conserve green space, you know, for the owners. What has happened was back with the advent of the automobile, of course, the building was cut down in order to accommodate a car. However, the cars back in the early 1900s were not the size that they are today. So right now, one of the photographs shows the damage that is being done by Jim putting our Jeep into the facility in order to get the door closed. We would like to add eight feet to the east. That would be towards the road. And in order to accommodate vehicles of today, as well as some storage space. And then you can also see from the front view of the building, it is a one garage door. That garage door is only seven and a half feet wide. And that also doesn't accommodate today. And so we would like to widen the building by six feet in order to make it a standard 24-foot wide two-car garage and put in standard nine-foot doors. In the packet that I submitted was also a picture of what the structure would look like with the two doors on it. And that's just a rendering. The extra space, of course, would be used for all of the other things that people accumulate and need storage for. It was interesting, I went through the different findings according to the code, and one of them had to do with economic hardship and self-imposed hardship are not grounds for variance. And I said there is no economic gain or loss and no self-imposed hardship. And then when the zoning administrator gave me a petition for variance, it implied that you had to have a hardship of some kind. So that's why the one does not have an answer and the other one does have an answer. So it almost is as though the petition does not jive quite well with the code. So I put that demolishing the existing structure and building an entirely new one three feet away is considerably more involved and costly. Also know that if the variance is denied, we would, moving the building three feet would also mean that we have to take out mature landscaping, which if it stays where it is, we do not. The other thing I wanted to just point out to you was, so in the end, we just want to go eight feet the one way and six feet the other. It's on the lot line now, and just continue that. And same siding, same overall end appearance. Everything that we do has to be approved by the state. Whether we do something on the outside of the house, any outbuildings, anything on the interior of the house, everything goes through the State of Wisconsin Historical Society because they administer the program for the Department of the Interior. So even whether they're, you grant the variance we request, or whether a new structure has to be built, they both have to go into the state for approval. I also found out in talking with the state that, which I was not aware of under compliance from their compliance division, that there is a state statute that requires that in the event anything is raised on historic property, the municipality has to submit the information and request into the state historical society. So again, all we're asking for is just to increase the size a little bit on the east, which is on the lot line, and just go eight more feet on the lot line. The photographs that had you pass around and were part of the packet, you'll see a shrub in the front of the garage, next to the garage door. The width of that shrub is the eight feet. So that also gives you a visual as to how large an addition that would be. And I also included a letter from the next-door neighbor, Jeffrey Robb, who is in favor of us going ahead and you granting the variance because that is helpful to him as well. And that's it. I thank you for your time.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Any rebuttal by the zoning officer?
Would this be my time to speak further on this? Or do we wait to go into closed session?
No, it's rebuttal by opposition.
Pardon?
It says rebuttal by opposition, and there is no opposition.
Deliberation by board, eh? Okay. We should go into adjourn, adjourn into closed session for discussion, right? To reconvene. So at this time, we need a motion to adjourn into closed session for discussion.
Motion to adjourn into a closed hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
So if I could just say something to the applicants here, just so you guys understand, we went into closed session a little early. So what we're gonna do now is, you made a presentation. We're gonna give the zoning administrator a chance for her to say her statements in response to your presentation and the application in general. Then you'll have a chance to respond to that if you choose. And then they'll adjourn into closed session for a decision.
Okay.
Just so that we're all clear, my fault for not controlling the process, so.
We just want to make sure all our i's are dotted and t's are crossed, okay?
I know, it's so often that you need...
I just wanted to just make sure I heard you clearly, Ward. Did you say that they would be making a decision outside of the closed session?
They would make, they would make their deliberations in closed session, and then we'll go back into open session in order for you to hear what that decision is.
Okay. Floor is yours, Allison.
Thank you. So Julie Taylor submitted in a building and zoning permit application for the property on 12 North Church Street. They are looking to do a small garage addition. That permit was denied due to setback requirements. Currently, our code states that all accessory structures need to be three feet or more away from the lot line. And currently, their garage that is existing is non-conforming, and it is on the lot line. Therefore, that application was denied, and Julie Taylor decided to proceed forward with a variance application. We did speak about other options that may meet our code, you know, such as coming off, bumping off the lot line a bit, three feet, and then doing a garage addition. That would allow them to make sure that they meet our current setbacks and our current ordinances. But that was not something that they wanted to do at that time. As you can see, the parcel is fairly large, so they do have a lot of room to expand or add on in other ways on this garage because they do have a lot of room on the other side of the garage. There is also always the option to move the structure or remove the structure and rebuild. However, the current structure is completely non-conforming, and our code specifically states that we should never expand a non-conformity. When a zoning application or a variance application is applied for, our ordinance section 17.12-7B states that there must be exceptional circumstances for a variance to be granted. There must be exceptional, extraordinary, or unusual circumstances or conditions applying to the lot or parcel structure use or intended use that do not apply generally to other properties or uses in the same district. And granting of the variance would not be of so general or recurrent nature as to suggest that the zoning ordinance should be changed. I will say that there are many other non-conforming structures within the city of Elkhorn. This is not the only non-conforming structure in the city of Elkhorn. I feel that there are other ways that this structure could be built or added on to without violating our current ordinance sections.
Can you explain what those are?
Explain the options, yes, of course. So a couple of different options would be adding on to the south end of the garage or jutting out either on the east or west side of the garage, three feet off the lot line, and then adding on to the garage. That would allow it to become a structure that, or an addition that is conforming with our current code. Section 17.9-3, existing non-conforming structures. Section 2 states that additions and enlargements to existing non-conforming structures are permitted but shall conform with the established building setback lines. So if they came three feet off the lot line on their addition that they are requesting, it would be approved. So they have room on the south side of the property. They also have room on the east or west side, as long as they come three feet off the lot line first.
What was your understanding of why they didn't want to do that?
I believe when I spoke with the applicant, they did not want to obstruct their garden That's all I have.
And she can receive questions if you guys have questions.
Yeah, you have anything else you'd like to add, Julie, or rebuttal? You have anything else you want to add to rebuttal to her statements, or?
The reason that we didn't want to, or don't want to, move the structure is that the one wall that's on the north side, which is the one that is on the lot line, is the one original wall that can be kept in its entirety. And then just added on to with eight more feet. The west wall, which is the rear wall, we would also keep as much as possible. The state wants us to, of course, again, do board and batten siding. And also, the windows that are in the existing garage are what today is called restoration glass. Commonly considered the bubble wavy glass from the 1800s. And so we would be reusing those windows, and the one window would not have to be disturbed on the west end. The one on the south would, if we went the six more feet, not including the, moving it off the lot line, that window would again, would be taken out and then put back in on that new side and the front. The other thing is that besides, you know, the zoning administrator commented that, you know, if the building gets moved, then out the back windows of the house itself, the view is buildings. And, which is true, you know, right now, it's green, some green space, flowers, and a large tree. But also, there's another tree and a boxwood hedge that would all have to be pulled out if the building gets moved off the lot line.
The north wall is part of Jeffrey's fence, you can mention that, too.
Oh, yeah. Also, that the letter from Jeffrey Robb states, and if you look at the photograph of that north side, you see that his fence went up prior to the present staff in building and zoning. And you can see that he did not put any fence panels up against the wall of the garage so that there would be easy maintenance for Jim and I. And so that's, therefore, that's one of the reasons that he would like it to stay where it is because it's also helpful to him. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just to make sure that all the board members know that they can ask questions of both Allison and the applicant. Just so you might want to make that clear.
Does the board have any questions of Julie or Allison?
Yeah, Allison, so when you say they can, if they moved it three foot off, are you talking about that entire north wall or just the addition part, it'd be back to three foot?
They could do either or, but they could just move the addition three foot in and then be in compliance, and that addition would be approved.
It would still remain a non-conforming use, but it wouldn't add to the non-conforming use. I think that's an important distinction.
Correct. Because section 17.9-3 of the code states that additions and enlargements to a non-conforming use, an existing non-conforming use, can be done. However, the addition portion does need to come into compliance with our current setbacks. So it would always remain a non-conforming structure, but the addition or enlargement would be approved because they would be meeting current setbacks.
Can I maybe explain that graphically? If I, if I'm correct. So this, this portion of the expansion, I know this is flipped up, it's flipped a certain way, but north is actually looking to the right. But this portion of the addition is what you're referring to, is that correct? That would be a non-conformance?
Correct. That portion of the addition, right there, where Matt has his mouse, is where it would be non-conforming. Where they're looking to add eight feet onto the garage, right on the lot line. Whereas if they came in three feet from the lot line and then did the rest of their addition south, all of that would be permitted. However, because they are requesting this addition to the garage, and it has eight feet directly on the lot line, they are not meeting our current setbacks.
Thank you. I think she has a comment.
Can I respond?
You have a comment? Go ahead.
We, we understand what the zoning administrator is suggesting. But then, we would have to go another three feet on the south side. And then we get into the problem of having to remove landscaping. The driveway is such that we would be too far over. What's not on the blueprint or the survey there is that there's a large mature tree and along with that boxwood hedge that would have to come out in order, because everything would be shifted over. The other thing that Jim just commented was that it wouldn't look like a carriage house. We want that appearance of a carriage house in the front, and that's why two separate carriage-style doors with the board and batten siding, as though it's, it's still an old
My recommendation would be to complete the addition on the back end of the garage. Therefore, the front side of the garage would still appear as though it is the appearance of a carriage house, but that bump in three feet off the lot line would be then in the rear of the garage, and you wouldn't notice it from the front.
And then you're into a large burr oak tree that's over 100 years old.
Any other comments?
That oak tree, the burr oak, is still, it's on the west side. You're not going any farther. Where's that print? So that's the tree right there that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
But you're coming, on the east side, is where you're putting your eight feet. And then you're coming out 24, so how is that affecting that tree?
It's not if it's on the east side. It doesn't affect that tree.
What am I getting wrong here?
I think this is where you're talking, right?
Yeah, so...
No, the zoning administrator's suggestion was to put the addition on the west side. The west side is, as you're looking at, at the screen, is to the left. So it's where the tree is, the big tree is.
I just made the recommendation that if they wanted to keep the appearance of a carriage house on the front side of the garage, so the west side where they're proposing their addition, and didn't want to bump out three feet from the lot line, they could potentially put an addition on the back side of the garage so that the appearance of the front remains the same.
Got that. But you're basically saying that the front side's too small to make it look like a carriage house. That's why you want to go all the way over, correct?
We want to make it so that it'll accommodate two vehicles, two separate garage doors rather than just the one. And the, the minimum today for a single door is nine feet. And so the typical two-car garage is 24 feet wide.
I think part of the thing that we're not discussing is that carriage house was built, I think, about 1880. It's been non-conforming for 120 years. It's been on the lot line. And if they decide to do nothing with that, it's probably gonna be on the lot line for another 100 years.
Right.
I, I think, my personal opinion being that it's on the national registry. And it's, they're trying to preserve the 1800s appearance of it. Is by moving it, it's gonna damage that whole theory, so.
Can I just interject, too? There are, there are six properties in Elkhorn that are national register properties. There's the Webster House Museum, the U.S. Post Office, the Band Shell, the municipal building downtown, and then two homes, our house and the octagon house. So doing, doing something like this isn't impacting the city as a whole. It isn't impacting every residential neighborhood, or it's a unique situation, is, is my point.
Any other comments?
Now, if you wish to adjourn into closed session, this would be the time to do it.
Now, for discussion purposes, we need a motion to adjourn in the closed session for discussion and decision and read adjourn.
I'll second.
I'll second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. I was informed that to override Allison's denial, you would take the action of the entire board to vote against it or vote for a favor of a variance. And I don't think that's going to happen, so I'd ask at this time, was the motion before the floor, to either approve or deny?
And the motion to approve would be to approve of the variance, to deny would be to deny the application for variance, just so you're all clear.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. So the action on this board is the variance has been denied? And the only alternative is if they want to take it to court, right?
Yes.
You understand what she says as far as adding on, you don't have to tear the garage down. Just the addition to the front would have to be offset three feet, which means your, your south wall is going to be 27 feet wide.
From the lot line.
Right.
Instead of 24, because you're coming over the three.
That's what I understand, and that, that's why I'm saying, it doesn't show even on the aerial view. There's, because we saw when, when you're, go back to that prior one, Matthew. That's not the tree I'm talking about or anything. There's a tree on the other side.
This one, Julie?
No. See, see the 00138?
Yeah.
Okay, go up and a little bit to your left, where the curve of the driveway is. Left side.
This one.
Now down, there's a tree there and, and a boxwood hedge. So that all would have to be pulled out if we go three feet further south. You can't see it well on that photograph.
Oh, it'd be back in here?
No.
Right here?
Nope. Go right, right, you're getting closer, a little bit, right there, right in that whole section, is another tree, mature tree, and an entire boxwood hedge. That all would have to come out in order for the driveway to function well.
Well, the board has voted, and there's really no other business before the board. I can inform you, under 1712-9, there's the option for a review of court record. Other than that, that you would have had to get, according to the ordinance, the four members to all vote unanimously in one direction. There's just no option here at this point, so there's no other business before the board but to adjourn.
As I mentioned, we cannot do anything until the city applies to the state historical society for permission to raise the building.
If that request were made to the city, then the city would have to do it within the timeframes. If you're, if you're requesting the city to raise it, is that what you're saying?
The city has to get the permission from the state historical society to take the building down.
If, are you, is that your intent, to take the building down?
We have to have a garage.
We have to, we have to have a functioning garage.
We have to have a garage. I mean, pretty simple, so, yes.
So if you could submit something in writing to the city for that, then we can act on it.
Julie, your pictures.
Motion for adjournment?
I say motion.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.